Well, that was a long two minutes. So, I'll go ahead and call the order of this meeting of the Planning Commission. First order of business is a roll call.
Thank you. Chair Wilson.
Present.
Vice Chair Kirk is absent. Commissioner Huber.
Here.
Commissioner Porter.
Here.
And Commissioner Dew.
Present.
Thank you.
Go ahead and start with our invocation and Pledge of Allegiance led by Commissioner Huber.
Heavenly Father, help us to remember that we are here to serve, not to be served. Remind us dearly of the many who need to be helped. Guide us to be there for others and assist them in time of needs.
All right, our first order of business is the approval of minutes from our June 10th, 2015 meeting. I'll go ahead and second that.
So, the minutes, we have a motion by Commissioner Dew, a second by Chair Bob Wilson, and both all in favor. Aye, anybody nay? And abstained by Commissioner Porter and Commissioner Huber.
All right, so we'll move on to Agenda Item Number One. Order of business, if anyone wishes to speak to any items this evening, if you please fill out a white card and give it to the clerk. I think I've got a whole bunch already, so I think we're good there.
Thank you Chairman Wilson. Agenda Item Number One is Case DEV-15-5. It is an amendment to the circulation element of the general plan to allow for the deletion of Sycamore Street and Wash Road. Sycamore Street is a collector designation and is located between Amargosa Road and the Oragran Wash. Wash Road is also a collector designation from Bear Valley Road, south along the State Highway Dyke to Amargosa Road, and then Wash Road continues north as an arterial from Bear Valley Road along the Oragran Wash to Amargosa Road. The proposal is to remove these sections of planned roadway, given that during our 2008 traffic modeling, it was determined that these sections were not needed. Furthermore, the construction of Wash Road would have to overcome some obstacles since it is located above the State Highway Dyke and the Oragran Wash. Also, Sycamore Street really serves no purpose, at least this section does, for a master-planned street since it was never planned to cross the Oragran Wash to the west. Therefore, staff recommends approval of these deletions. There's also two add-ons from property owners that abut Sycamore Street in support of this proposal.
Great, thank you. I'll go ahead and open up public comments in regards to Agenda Item Number One. Is there anyone wishing to speak to Agenda Item Number One? Being none, I'll go ahead and close that and bring it back to the Commission.
Mr. Chairman, I move that Case Number DEV-15-00005 be approved.
I'll go ahead and second that.
That's a negative declaration.
We have a first by Commissioner Dew, a second by Chair Wilson, and I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That project has passed.
Move on to Agenda Item Number Two.
Chairman Commissioners, Agenda Item Number Two, PLN-14-027. It's a site plan to allow for the construction of two fast-food restaurants in one multi-tenant retail building with an environmental exemption. It's located at Highway 395 and Palmdale Road. This project is for you again tonight because the Council referred this item back to the Commission to hear any new information. At that same time, the Council instructed the two developers and applicants to share that share the same shopping center access to work things out. The Planning Commission should hear any new information presented and should either vote to reaffirm their approval of Site Plan Case PLN-14-027 in Resolution P-15-01, and send that recommendation back to the Council, or the Commission should decide the information does in fact change their previous decision and recommend that the Council grant Walmart's appeal and deny the site plan. If there are any questions, staff is available.
All right, I'll go ahead and open up the public comments for Agenda Item Number Two. Got a number of cards. The first one will be Mark Ostojich. As if I butchered it?
No, no, it's Mark. Mark Ostojich, O-S-T-O-I-C-H. My address is 550 Hospitality Lane in San Bernardino, and I'm here on behalf of Walmart Stores, which is the dominant anchor in the shopping center that we're discussing this evening. And I want to reiterate a few of my prior comments, but my primary purpose this evening is to introduce a transportation planner that we've engaged to do a more graphic illustration of what our concerns are about the Cotty Foods project, and he really will warrant center stage on this this evening because I think he'll be able to present our current concerns in a graphic way that will be easier to grasp than trying to express them verbally. I want to start by saying, though, that we're not opposed to this project. Now, this project is not part of our shopping center. It's not subject to our Declaration of Covenants, Conditions, Restrictions, and Reciprocal Easements. It's adjacent to the center, and it does take access from our main drive. And I think all of its access, in fact, is dependent on access from drives that serve the shopping center. It does not have access from any public street. But we're good with that. We support commerce out there. We support consistent development, and we do support the project. Our concern with the project has really been technical. Our primary concern, as I discussed last time I was here, was the traffic impact that we believe it's going to have when considered against the traffic background that's already existing in the center. I recognize, and it came up at the last hearing, and I do recognize and affirm that that staff's position is that this project meets the city's parking requirements. So, I will affirm that on the record. However, I think in looking at what that leads to, it's important to look at the site design, any peculiar access conditions that exist, which I believe are here, and not to look at the traffic from this project in a vacuum. I think it's important to look at the traffic that this project will generate in conjunction with the existing background traffic that is already active in the center and will be active in the future as the center matures. And that's the point we make. I believe when you take this out of the vacuum and you look at it against the backdrop of the other traffic in the center, you see that it does create conflicts. And we have engaged a traffic engineer, an expert in this area, whose principal function is to work with entities, including public agencies, in doing traffic planning. So, the simulation that they're going to present tonight is based on actual data, and it's a tool that's valuable in actually projecting what the traffic conditions are going to be following the development of a project. And it's a little difficult to talk about because the project's not yet built. The traffic is not yet there on the ground. But we feel we can present a scenario for you that will show what the traffic will look like once the project is built. As I mentioned last time I was here, one of the great concerns I have is that if we make a mistake on this and the project is built, and the traffic conflicts that we fear actually occur, it's not going to be possible to correct them. It's going to be too late to do anything about it. Now is the time to correct it. And I want to say also that Walmart is very, very flexible in working with the Cotty Foods owner and developer to rectify the design features that we think could facilitate a resolution of this. So, without any further delay, I wanted to turn this over to Rawad Hani, who will present his credentials to you and then will present the simulation. It's a four-plus-minute simulation. It takes a few minutes for it to unfold, but he'll walk you through it. And he will start by talking to you about the methodology that was used in developing the simulation and about the assumptions that were made, and I think it will speak for itself. So, before he comes up, I wanted to just put into the record the CV of his firm and he and his partner, and then also thumb drive of the presentation he's going to make to you this evening.
Great, thank you.
Here's Rawad, thank you very much.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Rawad Hani from Transport Group. My address is 4340 Von Carmen Avenue, Newport Beach, California. I'm a professional transportation engineer, a professional civil engineer registered in the state of California, and I'm going to present today a microscopic simulation analysis showing the traffic operations within the site. I think we'll need to flip the switch. Trying to resize it to fit the window up there. Okay, so what you're seeing over here, it'll be a microscopic simulation model. What we mean by a microscopic simulation model is a model basically that assesses traffic at a microscopic level. It really dives into the detail of things. The model that we are using over here is known as Visim, and it is basically an international software that is being used by agencies throughout the world. Caltrans uses it, the County of San Bernardino, as well as other public agencies. What we've done over here is we really took the site plan off the footside, as well as the Walmart campus, and basically used it as the basis of our analysis. We used the traffic counts that were collected in March during a weekend, which is 3/14/2015, as the background in terms of traffic volumes, and we added on top of that the traffic that is generated by the site. I will run the simulation, and while the simulation is running, I'll basically highlight a few elements as well as our assumptions. So, again, over here you can see the three-way stop-controlled intersection, which is over here, coming into Walmart. Traffic coming into the site doesn't have to stop. All other legs will have to stop. This is basically the Cotty footside. I should mention over here, again, that the traffic is simulated for a weekend during midday. Another thing I should mention, which is as important, is that this assumes that all the uses on the site are food uses. So, traffic or trips generated are based on that assumption. Now, you should also note that if you assume that all the uses on the site are food uses, what that means is that parking, as a matter of fact, will not be enough because food uses require much more parking than retail uses. So, in a minute or so, you will start seeing kind of congestion building in, and the reason is because many of the cars entering the site will not be able to find parking. So, this simulation, you'll see that in certain locations, cars are disappearing over here because the purpose of the simulation is really to focus on the spine roads and not necessarily to model the parking, how cars are parking within the site. So, we are focusing really on the spine roads, the internal spine road, as well as the access to the site. So, when a car is appearing, it means that it was parked, it's taking off and coming to get out of the site. And when a car disappears, it means that it has already parked. Cars over here are blocking each other, but also another aspect that you need to take into consideration that there are cars that are leaving, there are pedestrians that are crossing within the site, as well as, given the fact that we modeled it as all food uses, parking is not enough, and so more cars will be circulating within the site trying to find parking. And once basically the site is full, no parking is available, this will cause kind of cars queuing back, whether it is entering through the drive-thru or even kind of entering from US 395. Another thing that I should point out is that the distribution that we assumed over here is 50% for each one of the drive-throughs. And the video that you are seeing over here is about a five-minute video. However, it's running at twice the speed, so this video really shows what's happening during the peak period, during the peak 10 minutes on a midday Saturday. And we chose that because this is when most people would go out and do their shopping. Analysis during kind of evening periods or PM peak periods are kind of similar.
Excuse me, can you just clarify that a little bit? I think what you said was the four minutes that we're watching here equate to 10 minutes on the peak hour trips.
The five minutes equates to 10 minutes, exactly. So, basically, just for the purpose of your time over here, we doubled the time. We are running it at twice the speed. So, as you see right now, it's basically after these 10 minutes, or it's kind of things kind of start clearing a bit in terms of traffic leaving the site. But still, you can see on the spine road, there is traffic backing up on the spine road, and this is primarily based on traffic generated from the site, as well as basically given the operational characteristics of this site. With that, I'd like to kind of open it to any questions that you might have for me.
Just two things that I've noticed, and I'm trying to take this all in. Some of the cars at the lower portion of the screen are turning to go straight, but then are leaving out of the center and making right-hand turns onto, I guess that would be 395, versus going straight out that exit and making that same right-hand turn on the 395, for one. And then, secondly, is cars that are going, that are coming around, they're missing this first exit, they're going around and coming in the second exit. For flow, and I'm looking at some of the patterns coming in and coming out, but I'm noticing that when they're leaving, where they're stacking up on this backside off of that top, I guess, exit out of the center, that this... I'm just looking at how, okay, how they're stacking up in that, right below your cursor, straight down from there.
Yep.
How when that was getting extremely backed up, that none of these cars that were making the right-hand turn going up and then making a left into the center were going straight and using that bottom entrance coming into the center.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
So, that could be an issue that it could present additional, at least, an inlet into the center. That's just, I noticed kind of one of the flows just going through that way, but some of the cars that were making the right could have actually gone straight.
You are talking about instead of basically turning left over here and going up, they can turn right.
Correct.
Yes, and the distribution that we assumed over here is based on the traffic volumes that were collected. So, there were traffic volumes that were collected on Saturday midday, March 14th, and they were collected at this intersection over here, which is the intersection with US 395, this intersection over here, this intersection, and this intersection over here. And the distributions that you see in the model in terms of traffic getting into the site and leaving the site is based on that, on these traffic volumes. So, these traffic volumes show that the traffic entering into the site, 80% of this traffic comes from here, and then the remaining 20% comes from this access point over here, as well as the access point to the south. So, this access points caters for 80% of the traffic coming in. In the same token, this access point caters for 70% of the traffic going out, where the remaining 30% use this access and this access. So, this is the reason why most of the traffic is trying to access this signal over here so that it provides more flexibility for them in terms of entering and leaving the site.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I'd like to ask a couple of questions. Maybe not, my first question may not be for you, but I understand that the gentleman representing Walmart indicated, to my understanding, that if there were changes made to the plan of Cotty, that you'd be willing to pay a certain portion to remedy something to your satisfaction. Is that my understanding?
Yes, sir. We think there is a simple change that can be made to the conditions that don't require the site plan to be modified, and that is to restrict the inline building to retail non-food uses. When you allow food uses in that inline building, in addition to the fast-food operations, there's a significant additional amount of traffic that's created during the peak hours, and that's where we believe the problem is created. So, there are other more difficult solutions. Maybe the driveway off of the north-south spine is in a very awkward place, being so close to the intersection with the main drive. A driveway could be moved to the south, but then that would require the inline building to be reoriented. It would be quite a more significant operation. But we're open to working with the developer on those types of solutions. But the simple solution, we believe, is to restrict the inline building so that only retail uses are permitted, not food uses. And we believe that that would dramatically change the traffic conditions that the site plan will produce.
Do you have an idea how many customers come to your facility, Walmart, in the course of a day, a week, a month? Could you give me some idea?
I don't, I'm sorry. I would be guessing. It's a significant number of customers, though, that are in that store, but I can't tell you the exact number.
I thought that might be something that would be provided in your reports to your authorities.
I think we can provide some data on that, yeah.
Okay, because should I be under the impression that if we were not to make any changes to the original plan of Cotty, that this affect you somehow regarding your clientele or what?
It's going to create conflicts with our customers. And retail customers go the path of least resistance, and if the traffic congestion in this center becomes intolerable, they'll go somewhere else. That's just the way it is, and that's our concern. That's why we're being so obstinate here, and we haven't given up. We see this as a serious concern. This isn't just an annoyance or not perfect. This is a serious problem, in our opinion. And Walmart operates in over 3,000 facilities in the United States. They've had significant experience in dealing with adjacent users and traffic conflicts. And they and we are very concerned that we're setting this up to create a traffic conflict here that could affect the patronage of the store. So, it wouldn't just be the convenience of our customers. If it gets bad enough, it could be detrimental to them even shopping here. They'll go someplace else, to another location, to another retailer. That's our concern.
From my own experience, I've seen people come out of Walmart, go to food establishments and vice versa. People who go to get something to eat, then go and shop. So, I just want to get something from you, and thank you.
Thank you very much, sir.
Chairman, I'd like to ask our staff a question regarding the simulation which we just saw. Did anybody review the simulation at any point?
Yes, I did.
Could you give me some idea of your thoughts?
Well, one thing I'd like to point out is that typically, we don't review simulations. When we review traffic studies, we have certain requirements. We have guidelines on traffic studies that we review, and they have to go through a certain analysis, a certain methodology, use certain standard references like the Institute of Transportation Engineers Trip Generation Manual and so forth. But we do not rely on simulations in our review. And that's fine to show a simulation, but we don't base our conclusions and our recommendations on reviewing simulations. We don't require them, and frankly... We don't require them, and frankly, in my opinion, it's just an illustration tool. We actually look at the numbers, and we look at levels of service and queue lengths and so forth. So we never have, and we really don't intend on reviewing simulations. It's, it's fine to show them. I'm not opposed to it, but we don't draw conclusions from simulations.
Okay, I, I hear you loud and clear. I appreciate the studies that you, you do study and the scientific approach that you take to this. So thank you. And Mr. Chairman, that concludes my questions.
And I, I don't care who answers this, but one of the things that COTI Foods did with their fast food restaurant is that they made the queuing a lot, a lot longer, and they pushed back where they ordered their foods. Most of the people that go into fast food restaurants don't park. They, they take it home, and so, so a lot of that traffic is not going to even stay in the parking lot. As far as I'm concerned, they would.
Correct, we did analyze, as a matter of fact, the drive-throughs for Wendy's and for Taco Bell, for both of the sites over there, and the drive-throughs work fine. There isn't an issue with the drive-through. I think the major issue is really with the traffic coming into the site if all the uses on the site are food uses. If the use is retail use, you might not see the same congestion that we are seeing over here. But if everything is food uses, there is an issue with the parking, which number one, basically, you'll need 110 parking spaces compared to the 80-something that are provided right now. So if everything is retail, if everything is fast food or food, food uses and not as retail, what will happen is basically, traffic coming into the site will not find parking, and this is based on the parking standards of the city of Victorville. Number two, in terms of the traffic simulation model, these traffic simulation models are, are not basically just graphical models. They are based, there is science behind them. They are based on the highway capacity manual processes and procedures. The traffic that is generated by the site was calculated based on ITE, Institute of Transportation Engineers, which is the general practice in, in our industry to do that. And the results basically that you see over here are basically similar to results that you would see if, if a Caltrans is carrying a project, or if a county is carrying a project. So these tools are being used by agencies throughout the nation in order to carry similar studies.
Thank you very much for your time, and I also wanted to say, we modeled this site without food uses in the inline building, and it looks fine, it works fine, without the food uses. The problem, it impacts the parking and it impacts the traffic, are the food uses in the inline building. So I just, I want to reiterate that from our standpoint, if there was a restriction on the inline building to retail non-food uses, we would be fine with it, and we would welcome them as a, an adjacent user. We think it's a good use and a good development. So thank you very much for hearing us.
Thank you. Next, we'd Dan Osren.
Hi, I'm Dan Osren with COTI Foods. You all know me, I've been up here several times. We're here, you know, to address Walmart's concerns for the, related to the appeal. Just I want to go through a little bit about my background. We brought our entire development team here just to lend some support for, to city staff and just for the project in general. But between all of us, myself, I've got 20 years in the food industry with McDonald's and Taco Bell. And our owner, Pete Capriati, has been with Taco Bell for 40-plus years, developing and running Taco Bell restaurants. And Chris Hutchinson has been 32 years with Wendy's, 10 years as a corporate officer in our operations. So we bring a lot of experience with us and a lot of development experience. And, you know, we wouldn't develop a project if we knew there was significant traffic problems, because it wouldn't, it'd be bad for us, it'd be bad for everybody. So, you know, we have a high comfort level in, in city staff support and, and of our project and how we've designed it to date. As we began the process of designing the site, we, we did work very closely with Walmart. We, we shared all of our plans and were directed at these two entrance locations, and that's how we basically arrived at this plan today. We redesigned the site at a certain point with, at the direction of staff to use the entrances as shown, to address their concerns related to traffic from 395. Just want to address a couple of, of comments in relation to the retail building that was brought up by Walmart. We're not currently proposing to have restaurant in the entire building. We just have a small part of it, 1,900 square feet of the total building as, as restaurant use. So I would imagine, given their statement that the building as retail worked fine, and their traffic simulation didn't have any of those issues that brought up, I would say that with the 1,900 square foot of retail out of the total, that their study would probably look a lot different. In fact, our study does look a lot different. We, we did use the numbers from their report. And in looking at their simulation, I just have a question that our traffic engineers, who's with us, Crane and Associates, will, will answer better than me. But I counted like eight to one cars that were going through, that were turning right. Eight cars were turning, or one or two were, were going straight through to the Walmart, which I found a bit puzzling. But I'll let our traffic engineers address that. I guess that's about it for now. I may stand up here and answer some more questions and bring up some more issues. But Helen and George are with Crane and Associates, and I'll let them kind of take it from here.
Hello, my name's George Reiner, for the record, with Crane and Associates. Also registered as a traffic and a civil engineer in the state of California. And our firm took a look at, and were asked to look at the analysis in the report being put forward. Obviously, the VSIM is something coming in, added and new. However, we took a look using another software, and Helen Shi, my colleague, who's also registered as a traffic and civil engineer, will go through the analysis. But I just wanted to comment quickly on the VSIM analysis. A very critical assumption made in there, which was driving much of the results, which is the assumption that parking's going to overflow. And I wanted to point out that back in May, you were given an analysis based on an actual count of a Wendy's and a Taco Bell, looking at what the real parking demand is. And it came up with an extremely different answer than did when you go to ITE manual. So then when you're saying, well, why aren't you taking parking out of the ITE manual? You'll find in the front, under cautions, it's labeled as a caution section, and let me just read this for the record. Parking generation is only the beginning point of information to be used in estimating parking demand. Local conditions and area type can influence parking demand. And also, I would add to the record that, the details of the specific use. Parking generation's wide array of data blends many site conditions and may not best reflect local conditions. Therefore, surveys of comparable local conditions should always be considered as one of the best means to estimate parking demand to account for local factors. That's basically saying, and what they ignored is, take a look at the local data, and that's what was collected and you were given back in May. Take a look when you're saying parking demand. Also, you're very familiar with the city, and you know whether or not your parking code is working. They're taking exception to your parking code, which is something you know probably as well as anybody else, does it work? So therefore, the key assumption, which I'd like to highlight, that was, makes their VSIM invalid, is that the parking will be overfilled when you have in front of you several analyses saying that's not the case. With that, I'd like to turn it over to my colleague Helen Shi, who will show you, using Synchro, another competing software, but the same basic idea as far as the computer model simulations. Using the traffic volumes from their report and looking at the same thing. And if you remove that assumption that there's backing queues and people sitting there waiting for parking spaces, which was their, again, critical assumption, suddenly, life looks very different, and that, he said, or that, that was also referenced, that they want to take and change around uses when that isn't what the actual data says. That's coming up with some assumptions based on data pulled from all over the country, rather than these specific uses in this specific area. So with that, Helen?
My name's Helen Shi, I'm from Crane and Associates. I'm a licensed traffic engineer and a civil engineer. We did a Synchro analysis as similar to VSIM. The software they use is national, nationally recognized software, too. We used it for presentation for many different cities, city of LA or city of Burbank. Used it, basically, we used their data. We used their data and we used the trip generation from ITE book, which is national literature that I used for most traffic studies. And also, because their traffic study in May was flawed, it was commented by the city, city planner. They have some false calculation by using equations for shopping center instead of the rates. And also, they have some inflated, double counting of the traffic for unoccupied buildings on the southeast corner of the whole plaza. But to be conservative, we also counted those traffic in just to simulate their study. You know, it's kind of like a worst-case analysis. So, and also, we didn't take any internal credit, which supposedly, because it's so close to Walmart, if there's a fast food, there are people coming to fast food to order, you know, for lunch or dinner or whatever. That's common sense, but to be conservative or make it worst-case, we didn't assume any credit for that. And also, the previous study in May, conducted on behalf of Walmart, considered the credit of the pass-by for the project, at the project drivers or intersections, which for our understanding, and to be conservative, too, make it as worst-case, we didn't assume pass-by credit, which means we almost doubled our, you know, trip forecast just to make analysis super, or double or triple conservative. So we did this simulation analysis with Synchro. It's, it's the same kind of software for the traffic simulation. The one I opened right now is weekday, weekday PM peak hour. We used their counts, so there, there's nothing fabricated here. On top of their counts, we added our future trip generations for the site. And for us, everything, we have the same conclusion as their May traffic study, that all the study intersections function very well, it's at level service C or better. And that because previously Walmart mentioned there is queuing concern at the drive-through window. So we took Wendy as example, because Wendy has bigger size and more traffic coming in. So the queuing for the weekday PM peak hour is about, you know, two or three cars at the drive-through window, which we already conservatively consider 70% of the incoming or outgoing traffic are going through the drive-through window, just to see how bad the queuing could be. So for weekday PM peak hour, as you can see, our Synchro analysis, the simulation showing there's almost no queuing issues for the whole site. This is a fast speed, we used a A speed, which means if there's one second, it's actually representing real-life A second. So this is weekday PM peak hour. I picked, I picked the peak hour, peak 10 minutes timeframe. And then I'm going to show the Saturday midday peak hour, which has a longer queue. It's about six cars, the maximum, observed during the peak, probably peak five minutes during the peak hour. So the longest queue is about six cars. As you can see, it's piling up to the drive-through window. And that queue is not going to extend to the circulating main road, so it won't cause any concern. And again, those are all based on their traffic counts. Nothing is really made up by us. And that's everything, the lane configuration is all from their report. The whole thing I'm showing is worth 10 minutes during the peak hour, worth of video. And then to, in addition, to address the concern, we kind of curious, too, what is really the capacity for the site? So we discussed with Dan, and we kind of want to figure out what's really the capacity, because so, so much concerns. Then we did a little practice, double our project site, double our project site traffic. So we just want to see how bad the traffic will be. So we did that practice. And the Synchro analysis showing, all the study intersections still are at level service C or better. So it works really good. And then the video I'm showing is weekday PM peak hour. That's by assuming double our traffic generation, which is not real, because we are not proposing that. But we just want to see what's the capacity. If we push it, how, how much can we push it to add to the site, traffic-wise? So for the weekday PM peak hour, the longest queue for, when we double the traffic, is six cars, which the bay for Wendy's site plan, they designed the queuing bay for the drive-through is eight cars. So six cars is within their limit. I mean, this is a peak hour, peak observed queuing, which means it's probably happened five minutes during that peak hour. I can't really say five minutes, maybe 10 minutes, but it's only that peak during the peak hour. So it's only six cars, it's less than their queuing bay. It won't cause any trouble to the parking. It won't cause any trouble to the parking, or, you know, won't cause any delay to the surrounding rainroads, for sure. And you can see, there's really no traffic concern at the surrounding streets or at the driveway. And again, this is a 10 minutes worth of data. So, but for Saturday, because it's more congested on Saturday, so we did the video on Saturday, too, just to confirm if, you know, if we assume the traffic is doubled for our site, what's going to happen? Then Saturday is a little bit worse. It has about 11 cars during, you know, the maximum observed during the peak hour, during the peak hour, peak of the peak hour. But that's still, because the bay now, the queuing bay is eight cars. So 11 cars are three cars more, but because it's still on the site, it won't block the outside surrounding system. So the rainroad, which, you know, maybe Walmart customer use, it's not causing any trouble, it's not blocking them. It's probably, will have a little trouble onsite, but keep in mind, this is when we assume we double the traffic, double the density of the site, which is not going to happen. We just want to see the capacity. So this is just showing you, when we double the traffic, then that's probably pushing the capacity or at the border line. And the level of service, even with this double traffic for all intersections, no matter it's weekday or Saturday, it's all level service S for every single intersection or driveway locations. So that's probably the worst-case scenario you can ever imagine on this site if we double our sites. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Dan, while you're coming up, maybe I can ask, maybe, can you summarize again for us why your presentation is so much different from theirs? And your, and maybe that's what the assumption that you were referring to was, but that seems like such a great difference that maybe a summary, I don't know if, I just, for myself, I don't know if the commission feels the same way, but I just need to understand clear why they're so different.
Helen, maybe you can answer that. But, I mean, from my observation of the first animation compared to our animation, I know that we used real numbers from their report, from the May Walmart traffic report. And like Helen described, we even doubled the internal traffic on our site, again, just to test it. I do have trouble answering why theirs look so much different than ours, but I did observe on the main entrance road on their animation, there was many more cars that were turning right and going south in the ring road as compared to going through to the Walmart. And in my observation, it's a Walmart. People are going to be going through to the Walmart, they're not going to be pulling in just to turn south on the ring road. As well, I don't really know how they came up with the assumptions of all the traffic going north on that ring road, and, which was creating all the stacking in their model. I just don't know how they came up with that, because again, we were using real numbers from their report, which we were understanding that they were to do also. Maybe Helen can answer it, unless I just did.
I'm trying. I will try. I don't really understand why is there queuing along the north-south circulation road. It really doesn't, to me, it's, if people are not going to Walmart, or why are they not going straight and taking, you know, this is more like avoiding more traffic on that major east-west, the crossroads, because there are more traffic coming, then why do you want to get into there? If, as a layperson or normal person, I will go straight and make a right turn. I mean, unless you want to go make a left turn at that, the crossroads. But if you want to make a left turn there, why don't you go south? There are other exits or entrances to this whole plaza. So why is everyone circulating and then coming out only from this driveway? That's very suspicious. I just don't agree with distribution. And second of all, internally, on our site, the traffic distribution, or the traffic pattern that the engineers, Walmart engineers showed, it just kind of confused me a lot, because it looks like all the traffics are circulating, they don't ever stop served by, you know, because there are a lot of drive-throughs. So you don't really drive, you know, circulating, never-ending, you don't do that. You drive through and then you leave. You don't stay onsite circulating for no reason. Or either you park or you leave. So the queuing cost on the side, on the Cotty side, partially, I think it's too many cars are driving without any purpose. That's kind of, I don't really agree. But do you have any points you want to add?
I can add to that as well. The previous study showed a lot of cars, as Helen mentioned, going in, but really none of them parking, whereas in Helen's study, there was the proportionate number of cars going in and parking. And on the last, on our study, that's why they kind of disappeared from the simulation is they were parking, whereas I didn't observe that in the first simulation. I don't know if you did. So a couple of things I want to point out. We do have with us Steve Dees, our chief operating officer, and Steve Siglin, our corporate counsel. So we can answer further questions, or we can discuss speed of Wendy's drive-through, if you'd like. And our study did include all the traffic from the Taco Bell and the retail building as well, just in case there was a question about that.
One question I did have is you were referred to 1,900 square feet. Now, is that in the retail section, or is that the two fast-food restaurants? Where does that 1,900 square feet?
Well, in the, I was trying to just describe the retail building. It's broken up into three, and the smallest part of that building is a restaurant that we're currently proposing. And the rest of that building would be retail.
So one restaurant, two retail, restaurant 1,900 square feet?
Correct. Yeah, out of 7,200 roughly square feet. Or is it? Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I first like to ask the question of the staff, of our engineer. Like the previous simulation, I take it is your view that we do not totally rely on simulations, but actually the studies in which you establish it, or go back to measure or state a conclusion. Is that correct?
Yes, I mean, again, I think it can be a useful illustration tool, but without going into the basic assumptions, as were discussed by the traffic engineers, the trip generation, the trip distribution, without going into all the basic assumptions and inputs to the model, the two models used, you don't have an apples-to-apples comparison. So really, without pulling back and beating with the engineers and going through all the assumptions and reviewing it, I would continue just to rely on the information that we've already reviewed, which is the traffic studies from both Cotty Foods and also Walmart. And I'd have to say at this time, my conclusion hasn't changed. My recommendation would still be the same as it was previously in earlier meetings, along with planning staff, to recommend approval of the Cotty Foods development. But I'm certainly open, if the planning commission wants engineering to review the simulations further with the traffic engineers, we'd be happy to do that. But my opinion is, I don't really know how productive that would be at this point. I feel like we already had enough information to make a decision earlier without this, without the simulations.
I, would you answer this question? Under the best circumstances, is it possible to pre, I mean, practically impossible to prevent a delay? Is that impossible, even under best circumstances?
To prevent any vehicular delay, stacking, you mean?
Yeah.
Oh, no, typically, there's a certain amount of delay, and level of service S, level of service C is a good level of service. That means things are flowing well. If you're at level of service F, that is severe congestion with a lot of delay. And that's, doesn't meet our standards in the city. So there's always going to be a certain amount of delay. The question is if it would be excessive or not.
I also want to share with this, and it's been my impression that whenever there is a prediction or a projection, those, in my opinion, are expected outcomes until a fact is established. And so I just want to share, that's my, that's my view of projections and predictions. Thank you. And I thank you, Mr. Chairman, and yield back. Thank you.
I have a question for Dan, real quick, if I may ask. Dan, you've already been required to extend the drive-through of Taco Bell to 144 square feet, I mean, 144 linear feet?
Yes.
That's by code, right?
Correct, yeah, we've done that.
So you'll gain, by code, you'll gain a couple parking credits that, that way, right?
That would be seven, yeah, seven total cars.
Now, you have less than that right now.
I think we're at, like, six, but, you know, as we've worked together, we've corrected that.
Then in the, when, as you've been submitting for building permits, you've gained, is it three stalls now?
I think we've gained three. That's a good point. I mean, we're exceeding code currently. I think we exceeded before, but we exceed code for parking spaces to an even greater extent now, with our current submittal.
With those gains, and if you limited the multi-tenant building to 1,900 square foot of food use, which you'd probably be willing to do, you'd essentially make parking on the site if you went to the one-per-hundred standard on the multi-tenant building.
It's a good point, yeah, so if we...
Would you be willing to limit the food use to 1,900 square feet in the multi-tenant building? It's just a question that we'd have to ask the commission and Walmart as well.
Yeah, we would be willing to consider that, yeah.
All right. I've got five more cards for Cotty, so I'll go through them and then I'll come back to you. Next up, I've got Jim Goodwin.
Jim Goodwin, Cotty Foods. My address is 10 Dianthus, Rancho Santa Margarita. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and planning commissioners. I wanted to make one correction. Helen mentioned an air, a calculation error that Walmart had done on the traffic study and attributed to planning. It was actually Anwar Waggy, and that's in your staff report. Your now 236-page staff report. And I think Brian confirmed that. There were some assumptions made on traffic counts. Also, Commissioner Porter mentioned that a lot of, a lot of the restaurant traffic is drive-through. In the Taco Bell and Wendy's, it's 65 to 75%, so they're not really looking for parking spots. And other than that, any other questions of me? Thank you.
Thank you. Steve Deere? Oh, Dees, sorry.
I really have nothing to add. I just want to make myself available if you had any questions.
Chris Hutchinson?
Thanks. Much the same as Steve. I'm more here to answer any questions that might pertain to Wendy's, whether it's, you know, speed of service, or how we handle service from our perspective. So if you have questions, I'm here.
Hi, thank you. Peter? I'm going to ruin this, so I apologize. Capriati?
Capriati, 29889, Santa Margarita Parkway. I'm the president of Cotty Foods. I think it's interesting that, I think the council brought up that there's, how many Walmarts? I think it's the 3,000. Both these, both these site plans have been looked at by Taco Bell and Wendy's, Taco Bell being Yum Brands. So we've got 20,000 locations out there, and they're pretty, pretty tight on how they want their queuing. And it has been approved by them. So I just wanted to bring that up as a, as a point. Is there anything I can help you guys with?
Thank you. And Steve Siglin?
Steve Siglin, I'm general counsel of Cotty Foods, and I'm here basically if you have any questions to ask me. My address is 29889 Santa Margarita Parkway and Rancho Santa Margarita. Thank you.
I'm going to have Rewad address a couple of the specific comments, and then I want, would like to close for less than a moment.
Thank you. I'd like to start by talking a bit about the parking. When we talk about parking, we are using the zoning code of the city of Victorville. This is basically our bible when it comes to parking. There are so many parking studies that are done throughout the nation. We use them sometimes on our studies. As a matter of fact, the studies that we're referred to are more generous than this study, so it'll be to our advantage to use the other studies, but we use the city of Victorville ordinance. This is basically 16 section dash 3 dot 21, which shows the parking rates for different types of land uses within the city. So this is an important thing to note, that whatever we use in our analysis in terms of parking refers to the city ordinance. Now, if you want to use, basically, if you want, if you want to assume that the retail site will have 1,900 square feet of restaurants, that means the 1,900 square feet of restaurants require 19 additional parking spaces. Obviously, this will be take, you have to assume, basically, that eight spaces are already coming from retail, and then three extra spaces, which is the over, the over, the oversupply right now. But converting 1,900 square feet from retail to restaurants will basically render the site non-compliant with the city of Victorville parking rates. And these rates are, just for the record, they are one space per 100 square feet for a restaurant, and they are one space per 200 square feet for retail. So basically, if you take retail 900 square feet, you divide that by 1,900, one space per 200 feet, you do the math, versus 1,900 per 100 square feet. So this is just for the record, and this is, again, referring to the city of Victorville parking rates. So this is an important thing. If you want to restrict the number of, or the square footage of restaurants, based on the supply that is provided, based on the parking supply, this number should be 600, about 600 square feet of retail that can be converted into restaurants. This is number one with respect to parking. Number two, with respect to traffic, as I mentioned earlier, we, and based on the question of Commissioner Porter, that we did assess the drive-throughs for Wendy's and for Taco Bell's. We don't have an issue with these drive-throughs. Everything, as a matter of fact, which is internal to the site, we don't have an issue with. Our issue is just making sure that the site is not having an impact on the spine roads. Now, I would like to answer the question of Commissioner Du, who asked, like, why, why are we seeing two different models? Why are they, why are they different? Because as a matter of fact, over here, we are comparing apples to oranges. We, in our analysis, assumed that there is food uses in that retail building. We assumed that this retail building has food uses. The other simulation assumed that there are no food uses. And just to kind of give you a, kind of a general scale of the difference, if you assume that retail building as food use, completely as food use, it'll generate 200 more trips during the peak hour than if you assume it retail. So if it's assumed as retail, the number is about basically 400 something. If you assume it as restaurants, the number is 600 something. So this explains the difference between the two simulations. So what we are saying over here, we are saying that we have no issue... So what we are saying over here, we are saying that we have no issue with that site being retail. However, and this is, I think, what you have approved earlier, we are asking that this site, that there is a condition that this site remains as retail and doesn't get converted at one point into a restaurant, because if it gets converted into a restaurant, there will not be parking enough as per the city's parking rates, number one. And there will be traffic issues, as we have illustrated earlier. I would li, I would, I don't want to go into the details of the traffic analysis. I saw so many issues that caught my attention, but I don't think it's kind of, these are technical issues. I don't think I'd like to address these right now, but I'd just like to keep these two themes, parking and basically the difference between retail and restaurants.
I have, I have a question. Now, that's the assumption with one unit being retail, I mean, two units being retail and one unit being restaurant, correct? Of, of the strip center, of the, the, the three units, only one of them being a restaurant?
We did them, we did them all as restaurants. We did them...
One or all?
All, all.
What would be the difference if there was only one as a restaurant?
We have not analyzed that, just one of them as restaurants, but again, if you just do one as restaurant, what's the square footage of that? I can quickly do the math of it, but if you do one of them as restaurant, you will have an issue with the, uh, parking.
I understand what the parking, but I'm talking in regards to the traffic flow.
With regards of the traffic flow, it'll be better than what we've shown. It'll be better than what we've shown, but we have not analyzed just one of them as, 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 as restaurant, and the rest is retail. It'll be probably somewhere between what we show and what, what basically the other traffic engineers show. It's be somewhere in the middle. But I think the difference that, uh, that you have seen in the two simulations is really 200 cars that are being generated by exactly the same site, if you have it retail versus if you have it restaurants.
He took most of the words out of my mouth, so I won't repeat what he said. I think that was the difference in the simulations. Our concern is that as it currently stands, the retail building is unrestricted as to food uses, so the entire building could be filled with food uses, and that's what we modeled, because that could happen. And, uh, I go back to my earlier statement that our request of the simplest solution of this problem would be to restrict the retail building to no food uses. We know that would work. I thank you very much for your attention. I'm sorry this has dragged on. I'm sorry that we've been so persistent and annoying, but it's out of good conscience. We're very concerned that, that this could impact the center, so thank you very much.
I, I just wanted to clarify something, though. If, um, if there was 1,900 square foot of food use in the multi-tenant building, it would make, it would meet parking code with, with the added parking spaces. And if you park it at one per 250 as a shopping center, which this, um, development has been required to be, to be developed as a shopping center. However, we require the retail building to be parked at a more restrictive standard of one per 200. So, we can play with the numbers a little bit here, and it would be parked just like the other retail buildings that surround the Walmart center. So it does meet parking. I just figured out the numbers here, so that would be, that would be no issue.
Um, thank you. I just wanted to say thanks to staff. You know, you've been great to work with through the life of this project. Um, but we do meet code, and I think Mike stated it, and that's what I wanted to point out. Because of the shopping center definition of the project, just like the Walmart definition of their project as a shopping center, and they also have retail buildings with restaurants and retail uses, and they're called retail and they're parked at the same rate, you know, that we are. And we exceed code for parking, so, um, I just wanted to clarify that, that's all. Okay.
Questions?
Um, no, but I, I'd like to make a comment if, are you going to close the public hearing?
There are no other comments? I will close public hearing? Oh. Okay, well, oh...
To let the record reflect, that I, in the spirit of compromise, I just suggested to Dan that why don't we just agree to condition this, the retail building to have only that single 1,900-foot user? We'll roll the dice on that and, and live with it, and that way we can all go forward, arm in arm, and we don't have to fight any longer.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you.
I'll go ahead and close public comments.
I, I know that the staff has worked a long time in, in developing, uh, the parking restrictions and, and park, and the, the things that were really important, because we've seen mistakes along the way, because we've been in business for a very long time. I've, I've never seen them, uh, where something that is current has caused a problem at all, one way or the other. So, um, I, I've seen where older ones have. I want to say maybe Vayarda and that area, but... You, you would be very well aware of what the parking requirements are for, even if it was a, they had another 1,900 square feet of a restaurant, would you not? I mean, you, would you, you wouldn't approve something that would, would impact on parking, a use?
And Paula, I'm sorry, can you repeat the question? I was actually...
Well, you, you would not approve it. These still have to come back to you, uh, when, when these are determined, what uses are going to be used for the...
Oh, correct.
Retail portion of it. I, I have no problem with the drive-throughs, because I don't think those people are going to stop and park. I mean, maybe a few, maybe four or five, but they usually don't pack inside of a fast food restaurant. So, um, anyway, I, I have a lot of faith in, in staff and, uh, what their requirements are and what their recommendations are.
Yes. Yes, I'd like to make a few observations. First of all, I commend, uh, the, um, the petitioner and the concerns of, uh, the other party, and I, I, um, appreciate the fact that the city of Victorville can have, uh, good business, uh, in the city of Victorville that, um, serve our, um, citizens. And I commend the staff for their diligence and also their expertise in advising and providing information to the commission. And I congratulate my, uh, my fellow colleagues for, um, what is, uh, the spirit of this process. It's been, um, a positive process for the most part. Um, and I don't think anytime that you want to attain something of a major or, that's major or significant to be relatively easy. I think, um, those challenges are sometimes often complex, and negotiations are what they are. And I think this has been a good outcome. And I thank you, Mr. Chairman, for your leadership. Thank you.
I have one comment. The two schematics of the cars going into that shopping center area. The first one, to me, was just common sense ridiculous. I counted 50 cars in all directions going into that shopping center. It, it just don't seem realistic to me. And I've only been here 50 years, but, uh, yours seem more realistic. And where the two are so different, I don't know. I'm not, uh, in that field whatsoever. So I'm gonna have to agree with staff and everything that's been done, and if staff feels comfortable that everything is A-OK, I'm, I'm, uh, ready to act on this item.
One additional, so we'll just, if we deny the appeal, we have to add in the additional condition of...
Um, if I might, with Larry's, if staff's okay, let me just ask one thing. Is there a maximum on the square footage that would be, that retail building would top out where they would no longer be able to do another retail, another restaurant use in that building?
You mean from the, the 7100 square feet or whatever it is?
Did they fill all 7100 feet up and still meet our parking ratios?
No.
No, they couldn't. So what is the maximum square footage that they could have?
Well, first, first, we don't regulate the inline stores. It, it would be too difficult throughout the city to, to...
Determine when and check on a business license or whatever?
Right.
Okay.
But in, in this instance, we could flag the parcels and, and regulate it, but it would be essentially about that 1,900 square feet maximum you could get a food use in if you went by code. That's...
Okay, I, I'm just trying to work out a resolution so that we don't need to go back to the council, and it looks like Jim Goodwin is ready to add to this.
Uh, I, I conferred with our, our owner. His, his concern, and, and I share it, is that we're not sure that suite's exactly 1,900 square feet, but in the spirit of cooperation, he, he reached a, uh, held out an olive branch. What we'd be willing to do is restrict it to one-third of the, whatever it is, 7150, and be done with it.
That seems like a reasonable, around 2,300 then?
The maximum, 2,380 something?
As long as we're within code for that area. Okay?
Okay. I, to, to me, that's where I was headed. I, I wasn't quite con, I didn't know whether that building could hold all restaurant or not myself and still meet our parking, so that's why I wanted to ask that. So, if staff would agree that anywhere from 1,900 to a third of the building, depending on parking ratios, and like he said, they're going through the plan review submittal process right now and have modified the site, it sounds like, to come up with spaces. So we're not sure what the final parking space count will even be yet, so... Uh, but that seems like a reasonable condition, Mike. Would you agree?
Yes.
Um, we'd also like to condition that Walmart remove their appeal.
That would be hoped that, yeah, if they're, if they're there to agree to this, that that would be part of this. That would be the reason for doing this, so that we don't have to go back to council, or that we go back to council only as a report saying that we've ironed it out with an additional condition.
Oh, I didn't hear everything that was said, I'm sorry. Uh, what is the proposal?
Be that you remove the appeal, so we go back to council. We get, um, a limit on, on the retail building to...
And what is the limit?
The limit is a maximum of one-third of the 71, 7200 square feet that we have...
Or the maximum that complies with our development code in terms of parking. Correct. Correct. Up to the commission then to...
So do we start to act on the denial of the appeal, or do we...
Affirm approval with the recommendation for a new condition, which, Mike, I don't know if you've worked anything out wording-wise?
Yeah, modified condition number three right now reads, "In compliance with Title 16 and the Crossroads Shopping Center, restaurant uses are permitted to occupy the multi-tenant building at the ratio of one per 200 square feet." That's how it reads right now. So there's unlimited use of restaurant in the multi-tenant building. We'd change it to read, that last sentence of condition three would read, "Restaurant or food uses shall be limited to occupying one-third of the multi-tenant building or not to exceed Title 16 parking standards at one per 100 square foot of food use." Okay.
Do you, do you want a motion?
Wait, if I can, if I can correct that. I'm, I'm a little concerned, because the one to 100, you know, currently, the retail building is one to 200, with no definition of whether it's a retail or a restaurant. So I'm a little concerned that with that condition, we couldn't, we couldn't do 1,900 square feet, let alone the one-third of the building. So I would rather if you keep per code, which is, we're approved as a shopping center, that we would go maximum of one-third of the retail building up to the, the code definition of a shopping center, which we are, and not the one to 100.
Yeah, that, that would work as well.
Okay.
If I remove the one per 100.
Okay, thank you.
And I just want to make sure that the maximum is one-third of the building.
Correct. So, I'll reread that. Modified condition number three, the last sentence shall read, "Restaurant or food uses shall be limited to occupying one-third of the multi-tenant building or not, not to exceed Title 16 standards."
Definition of one to 200 shopping center? Just to clarify.
Shopping center standards.
One per 250 now.
250, perfect.
Uh, uh, yeah, I, we were more restrictive on you, so we can lax up on that, one per two.
Hey.
Are you ready for a...
Ready.
I, I move that we affirm the planning commission's approval of the project by adopting resolution number 15046 with the staff's wording as the, the new condition.
I'll go ahead and second that.
We have a motion by Commissioner Porter, a second by Chair Wilson, to affirm the PC approval of this project with the changes and modifications to condition number three. Um, we then do not have to go back to city councils, so that project has been...
Now, we will...
We'll do a memo.
Do a memo. We would like to receive a written response of Walmart's withdrawal of the appeal, and we will send this, the commission's recommendation, probably under consent calendar if there's been a withdrawal of the appeal at the time.
Yes, and I'll do that.
Thank you.
So, I'm gonna call for the vote, please. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That has been approved with, uh, I forgot earlier, by his chair, Kirk is absent.
Alright, thank you. Alright, we'll go and move to agenda item number three, and we've got two separate items, so we'll hear the first of item number threes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. Yes, item number three. We have been working on this for quite some time now. It began in 2014, and, uh, over that period of time, in September of 2014 to the present, we have probably come to the planning commission on seven or eight different occasions, with information, with discussions, with topics, with a number of different things. We've, we have the planners here available for you, who have worked on the different aspects of the, the, um, proposal. We have Justin Snyder from the San Bernardino County Sheriff's Department here to support the recommendations, uh, that are proposed. As you mentioned, we've se- separated out into two resolutions based on the city attorney's recommendation, based on the money service moratorium that's been going on for the last year, year and a half, is set to expire, and we're a little concerned about the time period between this going to the council, becoming finally effective. So we're recommending a second resolution so that the council can take care of that with an urgency ordinance when it goes before them. And we've also, uh, prepared a new resolution for you in your packet tonight, which also has that same money service language in it, just in case there's a challenge to the urgency ordinance, it will follow the process with all of the other proposals, all of the other changes that we're proposing, and, uh, be adopted that way. If you have any questions, we, like I said, we have staff and Justin available. I'll go ahead and open up public comment on the first item number three, but we're also gonna have a second item number three, so I do have one card, uh, it must be Leon. I'm not sure if you're talking to the first or the second. This is in regards to, um, money services currently. The next one? Anyone else wishes to speak to this item? And I'll go ahead and close public comment.
Chairman, uh, if, correct me if I'm mistaken, regarding the money services, does this fall in line? I read some, um, some language as relates to a moratorium. So, um, in my packet, I was considering all the, um, the problematic businesses, and since, um, there is a moratorium on debt one, I, um, I don't know if this is the place where I would make the recommendation that we consider a moratorium on the other problematic business, businesses. So, um, that's a point I, I would like to bring up now, if this is the appropriate time.
It, Chair, it's up to you. We, we, you could actually consider this as one public hearing for both items, both resolutions, if you'd rather do it that way, and, um, just open, open everything. Or you can, uh, if there's no one here to speak specifically on money service, uh, resolution, we can certainly make a motion and, and approve that resolution separately, or you could do it both.
And the concern we have here is that this may expire prior to city council adopting? Is that what our concern is?
Well, that's, that's the, one of the reasons why we have a separate resolution for it, yes. All, they were all packaged together last time we came, and then, uh, then the money service aspect of it was pulled from it into a separate resolution. You are approving them both, hopefully. You are approving them both, hopefully. That is our goal tonight, but that way, when it gets to the city council level, they're going to act on the separate one differently as an urgency ordinance.
Got it.
Meaning it'll be adopted sooner than the typical process for all of the other ones.
There currently is a moratorium on money services.
Yes.
They're gonna, they're gonna speak on the second one.
I thought it was all together.
Oh, I was gonna do them separately because I think there's a need for it to be handled, the money services aspect to be handled now, and then the...
That's, that's perfectly fine. If there's nobody here to speak on money service specifically, you can, it is the same case number, D E V 1501, but if you'd like to adopt the resolution for money service separately, that's fine.
I'll go ahead and make a motion to adopt Resolution P-15-003 and P-15-034.
That's a...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, there you go.
There you go. And to reintroduce money services as part of the overall code amendment, and introduce this to the, what, city council as an urgent need.
But this is only for 15034?
15034.
All right.
I'll second it.
Okay, so we have a motion by Chair Wilson recommending as an urgency item, the money services portion, Reso 034. And we have a second by Commissioner Porter. I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So that will be recommended to the city council for approval as an urgency item, with Vice Chair Kerth absent for the vote.
All right. Now we'll go on to our second agenda, item number three.
Yeah, this is, that was the same presentation. I'm sorry, the presentation was for everything. This, this resolution, like I said, not only includes money services, but also all of the other uses that we've talked about over the past year. Setting regulations for massage parlors, setting regulations for tattoo, prohibiting smoke shops, internet cafes, definite, providing new definitions for those uses, light auto repair, the whole gamut of everything we've talked about over the year. This, this resolution would cover it all. Just go through the normal process of approval.
And that's, going forward, current businesses would be basically grandfathered in? No issues?
Correct.
All right. I will go ahead and open up agenda item number three. It's DeLeon.
So, good evening. My name is Sylvia Vallejo DeLeon, and I work in the Healthy Communities Department at St. Joseph Health St. Mary. I'm an active participant in the Healthy Victorville City Initiative, and I recently joined the High Desert Community Coalition because of my concern over alcohol and tobacco abuse here in the high desert. As a parent, I was very shocked when I learned about synthetic drugs and the kind of damage that it causes to our youth. I couldn't believe that they were recently available at many smoke shops. I was equally concerned when I heard about two arrests done at, by the sheriff's department at a local smoke shop in their parking lot. At my previous employer, although we delivered healthcare services, we were in a shopping center that was smack in the middle of a bingo, a liquor store, and a smoke shop. And I saw illegal activity happening almost on a daily basis. I would see people putting packages in a tree and other individuals coming to the same spot and picking them up. And data shows that these kind of establishments attract this kind of criminal activity. In addition to my concerns about these establishments, I'm also concerned about the health of the community. For every three years, our hospital, as a nonprofit hospital, we have to do a community health needs assessment, which is a public document that's available at our website. And we hire an independent organization to gather information from our local citizens. And some of the things that were, that were very stagnant was that self-reported tobacco use is almost double that of the state. Ours is 20%, and the state is at 12.2%. Alcohol use is also higher than the national average. It's right now at 18.9% in the high desert, and at the national level is 15.8. The concern here is that most, one in five deaths can be traced back to smoking. I support the city of Victorville, and I applaud it to prohibit more smoke shops and smoke lounges. I would also support the efforts to hold current establishments to very high standards because we've noticed that some have been caught doing it twice. And so, thank you for your time, and I'm sorry I got nervous, I'm not a public speaker, and thank you for your time again.
Great, thank you, you did fine. Anyone else wishing to speak to this item? I'll go ahead and close public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, I'd be recognized. I am proposing that, that we have a moratorium on problematic businesses for the city of Victorville. It's my position, or my impression, that the city of Victorville is twofold as it relates to its future. One, I believe that the city of Victorville is in a state of correction of those things that are, does not serve the mass of people in the city of Victorville in the manner in which they desire. And at the same time, I think the city of Victorville has a strong desire to have our, our citizens safe, and at the same time, provide real jobs, jobs that, you know, pay people above a minimum wage. For all the data that the staff has collected and for what I've been exposed to regarding, relating to problematic business, I am absolutely convinced that this is not as much as a profit to us as it is a challenging venue, based on calls made by law enforcement not to include fire department or paramedics for individuals being harmed, in addition to any other type of services that drain the resources of the city of Victorville for these problematic areas. And so, since we're in this age that we're in, I think it's incumbent upon us to take every measure possible to ensure the safety of our citizens. And for the amount of people who do go to these sort of businesses, which I'm not convinced is the majority, that's for sure, I think we should have anywhere from a three to five year moratorium on these businesses, and then the commission come back, can come back and look at these establishments at a later date. The city of Victorville is gonna grow. We're approximately somewhere about 130,000. I don't know what we'll be looking like five years from now, but I can, I'm absolutely of the mindset that we will grow. The question is, how do we grow? More smoke shops and other problematic businesses, I don't think, enhance the profile of the city of Victorville.
And just to be clear, this is not a moratorium, it's actually a code change.
Yes, that's correct. I think what Mr. Dew is proposing is that the planning commission also recommend to the council that they adopt a moratorium. Possibly while this item, it goes to the city council July 21st. They, if they adopt it, if they approve it, it goes for a second reading at the end of August. If that goes forward, then it gets, 30 days later, it will be in effect. So you're talking September, the end of September. So I think what Mr. Dew is pointing out is that, why don't we establish a moratorium? By state law, moratoriums are limited to a two-year period, but, and, and the idea is that you're doing that for, to study something, so we're presenting the study, and he's saying that, why don't we stop them before, so that no more apply to the city in the period that this gets approved or adopted?
Have we had very many apply over the last six months? Better than I, not many?
The majority of the uses actually require a conditional use permit, so staff and planning commission would have discretion over approving those uses, so since it's in the pipeline now to prohibit these uses going forward, it, it may not be necessary. Some of the uses, though, I believe, smoke shop is a permitted use. We don't, we don't get a lot of them.
Smoke shops, we don't get a whole lot of them, but we do see them more often than not. It's not like a yearly thing, or even like a six-month thing. It's every few months, it seems, we get one. Maybe one might close, one might come in at that location. So those are, those are more common than not than some of the other ones, because by code now, smoke shops are just a retail use. They're actually listed in our code as a permitted use in certain districts, so there's not a whole lot of regulations on those. Some of the other uses, like hookah lounges and things, because they are conditional, as it stands now, we don't see a lot of those come in. We only have a couple in the city. Tattoo parlors, I think we only have two in the city, and one's not active at the moment. So some of the uses, it varies depending on the use, the severity of how it needs to be, but definitely there are some uses there that, that we do, we do see quite.
Questions? All right, my question would be, would it be staff's recommendation to do a moratorium? And would that then be, would we be revisiting this in two years from now, or...
No, the moratorium, I would only go until the final adoption, a final in-effect date of the... I, I could certainly check with the, if you want to recommend it, I can check with the city attorney. Like I said, it's, trying to think of the wording, it's, you typically, you do a moratorium when you, you identify an issue, want to spend some time researching it and studying it, and coming up with a solution. That's what we did with money service. That's why it was part of, that's why it was coming to you as a body, because of the concern, we were, at the time, that was our most pressing need. We had almost different versions of check cashing places fighting to get into the city. That's why the moratorium was placed. The, we didn't do the same thing for all of these other uses that we, we didn't know about, a lot of the, some of these uses that we added along the way, so that was the only moratorium we had. So if you want to recommend it, I can certainly put it to the city council, or city attorney, I mean, and ask him whether that is even, I think it's a good idea to, if we're concerned about these type of uses that we're prohibiting coming in, in that timeframe between now and then, it, it's an absolute excellent idea to do. And your recommendation, if it can't be done by law, then it can't be done. It's just your recommendation, so. But if we can get away, find a way for the city council to do it, we'd certainly recommend that.
Would we do the recommendation for the moratorium and the...
It would be, adopt the resolution, and also recommend to the city council that they adopt a moratorium for the prohibited uses of this, of the...
Until the ordinance takes place, right?
Correct.
A little clearer.
Well, I move that we ask the city attorney if it's possible to put a moratorium on these uses until such time as a, a, a ordinance is adopted and becomes effective.
And don't forget the motion to, for 15, Resolution 1503, sending, recommending to the city council the approval of all of these changes.
And the adoption of Resolution P-15003, and recommend that the city council find the code amendment exempt pursuant to sequo.
Second.
We have a first by Commissioner Porter, a second by Commissioner Dew, to adopt Resolution 15033, and recommend to the city council a moratorium to prohibit these uses until the ordinance is adopted and becomes effective.
A moratorium on the prohibited uses.
On the, on the prohibited uses. And I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So that will be recommended to the city council, with Commissioner Kerth absent.
In compliance with the Brown Act, it is now necessary for the planning commission to make available time for members of the public to address the planning commission on items of interest that fall within the planning commission's subject matter jurisdiction. Please limit the length of your comments to three minutes. Is anyone that wishes to speak to the planning commission? Go ahead and close that. On to agenda item number four. The final draft of the Victor Valley, or Victor Elementary School District Long Range Master Plan. Move on to agenda item, let's see, uh, presentation of reports by commission members.
I have one thing. In the September 30th, October 2nd League of California Cities, there was a, I don't know why it struck me, but it said, tax increment financing is back using the new EIFD tool. Could you look into that and see what that is? It's for infrastructure, you know, it's instead of redevelopment agencies. I also understand the skateboard is gone. Skateboard rink is gone.
Skate park?
The skate park. It is gone.
He is, we did have an application for that, is it still moving forward? For a skate park down in Yvadale? That he was, he was promoting, or he was...
The owner's put his efforts into making it a legitimate aspect of Yvadale Park.
Nice.
We haven't seen it since we met with him about a month ago, yeah, so.
He hasn't sold it on eBay, huh?
Eber? Mr. Duh?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would be remiss if I didn't mention, in fact, that our nation very much recently experienced a national tragedy, where there were individuals, lives were taken in a, in a church, which is a matter of sanctuary. And I, I'm grateful that something of that magnitude has not occurred in the city of Victorville, and every step that we take in making the city of Victorville safe, such as problematic uses, fall in that category to some degree. I have no idea why people do the things they do, but it's most regrettable, and no one, no one wants to see harm come to any person. Thank you.
And I have nothing. We'll, go ahead and close this meeting till our August 12th, 2015. Adjourn.
Thanks.
Did a good job, man.
Good, good meeting.
All right, it's time for dinner, kids. Hold me above them.